Good. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Virginia City Council chambers. This is a regularly scheduled city council meeting. I will call this meeting into order. Today's date is Tuesday, November 9th, 2021. The time is 5:30 PM. Pam, would you please take the roll call?
Haribou.
President.
Freely.
Here.
Paulson.
President.
Biondich.
President.
Johnson.
Here.
Aaron Zelli.
Here.
Huffy.
President. Will everyone please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, well, we're at item four on the agenda, which is the public forum. This is an opportunity for members of the audience to come forth and give testimony or ask questions or present to the council any concerns that they may have. So at this particular time, if anyone in the audience would like to come up and speak this evening. We do have one person in the audience. Please come forward. Turn the light on to green on the microphone, please, and please state your name for the record and welcome to the city council meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Janice McCoskey. I live here in Virginia, and I'm a member of the Friends of Virginia Public Safety. And we're a group that intends to become more involved in city government, as we discussed at our meeting on November 1st. And I chose to attend the committee of the whole meeting the next morning. And I'm quite disturbed by something that occurred at that meeting, and I would like to read my letter, please. Dear Attorney Lindsey, I am Janice McCoskey, resident of Virginia. I also serve on the Board of Directors of the Friends of Virginia Public Safety. On Tuesday, November 2nd, 2021, I attended the Virginia City Council Committee of the Whole Meeting at City Hall. I have attended the same meetings in the past. I am thoroughly disgusted in an action before the council, which was on the meeting's agenda. The item for discussion was a travel request for Parks and Recreation Director Brian Silver to be reimbursed for parking fees for a city vehicle while he attended a conference on golf course design out of the country. The dollars requested were approximately $130. Counselor Julianne Paulson immediately expressed her dismay at this request and felt it was in direct retaliation to a recent similar request from Fire Chief Allen Lewis. She also inquired how this item got into the agenda packet. Much discussion ensued, and the matter was brought up for a motion. There was no motion, and the item was not acted upon. I felt very confused about this whole issue, and I left here wondering what had just taken place. The next morning, Wednesday, November 3rd, I received a phone call telling me that this item was just a joke. What? A joke in a public meeting? I am appalled at this action, and I feel there should be an immediate and full investigation by an outside agency into how the item was even brought up for discussion. I believe it is an embarrassment to the city council, the city itself, and Fire Chief Lewis. It's obvious to me that someone had requested and placed this item for discussion and action in the agenda packet, and it was actually brought up for action. I do not know the process for placing items on the committees of the whole's meeting agenda, but whoever was responsible, for this should be held accountable for their actions, along with a public apology to Fire Chief Lewis. The action is that of someone who has apparently an axe to grind with someone, and they are trying to insert personal politics into a public meeting setting. I also believe whoever is responsible should resign from whatever position they hold in the Virginia City Government, as I feel this action is conduct unbecoming a public official and should never be tolerated. Does this person or persons responsible consider all actions of the council a joke? Is our Virginia City Government a joke? How can the public trust any actions taken at these or council meetings as legitimate or just another joke? The credibility of all our actions by our city has been destroyed, and the reputation of our city is now in question. I request that an investigation be undertaken for not only those who created the travel request, but also whoever allowed it to become part of the public meeting. I expect to see immediate attention be given to this matter and it be resolved. Thank you for your efforts to resolve this, and I look forward to hearing publicly the results of your investigation. Sincerely, Janice McCoskey.
Thank you, Ms. McCoskey. I'll comment on that briefly, and then I'll turn it over to our city attorney. This action that was taken on the part of the council, the proper, the normal procedure is, is whenever a travel request is brought forth, it's brought forth by the employee to our city administrator, and the city administrator reviews that, determines if, in fact, that it's a legitimate travel request and has merit. Usually, it's signed and sent to the city council meeting for the consent agenda items, and that's normally what happens. But in this particular case, as with the case of the previous request by our fire chief for an out-of-country travel, it came to the committee of the whole meeting because this was, these were unusual requests. And so they wanted to vet it out at the committee of the whole meeting prior to going to the city council meeting for further review. The two are travel requests or are out-of-country requests. Different, one is different than the other one. And so the city council approved the first travel request. I believe Chief Lewis was invited to speak as part of his Bush Foundation grant that he received of $100,000 to spread the word and to participate in different venues with respect to fire, EMS, and those kind of issues. He also was to obtain additional post credits or credits for, his EMS credits toward his licensure, in addition to that, he was a presenter at this out-of-country event. So that was approved, as a matter of the public record, at the city council meeting. This secondary request that was made by our Park and Rec Director was a request that was filled out but not signed by either him or the city administrator. It was brought forth for the city council to review prior to for approval, because normally the city council approves these requests. Most of the time, it's at the consent agenda request, but in this particular instance, as with the one with Chief Lewis, it was an out-of-country request, which is unusual, and it came to the committee whole meeting for discussion as part of our working group. So that's the difference between the two. And Brian, could you give us a little synopsis of what's moving forward? We are addressing the issue. It's under review. We have our city attorney involved in this matter, so we hope to move forward and have some information in the future. Brian?
Thanks, Mayor. What I can say at this point is that I have spoken with the administrator, and the administrator has authorized me to look into it a little bit further. I haven't finished talking with everyone that I'd like to talk with before I offer a final determination or a final conclusion about what I found, but I expect that that's going to happen within the next couple of days, and then I will forward a memo that summarizes my findings to the city administrator to share with the council.
Yeah, thank you, Brian. Any further comments from the council? Counselor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Mrs. McCoskey, for coming and reading the letter. I really appreciate that. And upon what our mayor and our city attorney have stated, one comment that I do want to make is the fact that this wasn't signed is concerning to me, the travel request. The fact that the title of the event or seminar was not listed on the travel request is a concern to me. And if you read directly on the travel request itself, on the bottom of our travel request, as stated in the City of Virginia travel policy, it states that they, number one, need to attach a copy of the agenda of that seminar. Number two, they need to submit the request at least 30 days in advance for approval of any travel request. And number three, that the mayor has authority to approve any emergency travel requests. So in moving forward and conducting whatever you're looking into, I would also further suggest that we, as a body, review our travel policy and maybe review that with department heads, so they can review that to their staff in terms of what the policy actually states going forward, and that if travel requests are not completed as stated in these, in the documents with what is requested, it's also requested to circle what vehicle. It says circle the city vehicle, personal vehicle, Airbus, train, or other. So this was not filled out properly, and in my opinion, should never have come before the council for review without a signature of a supervisor. So it would be my recommendation that in, after you go through your process, that we also take the next step in reviewing the travel policy with our, you know, at the committee level, and then also relaying that information to all department heads. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Paulson. Thank you, Brian, for the information about moving forward with the issue. So is there any other comments, questions upon the council? Ms. McCoskey, the information you disseminated here today, we are taking action with respect to that, so please look forward for some additional comments, questions, or concerns, and a recommendation through our city attorney and our legal counsel. So thank you very much. Counselor Biondich.
Thank you, and thank you for coming and reading your letter. I think it's important that everybody can hear what your thoughts were, especially when it was your first meeting, coming back to be with us. But I would echo that we perhaps need to go through that policy and make sure everybody fully understands everything that needs to be documented and signed before it comes to this body. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Biondich. Okay, let's move to item five, which is the consent agenda. The following items will be enacted by one motion unless a counselor or a citizen of the city of Virginia requests that the item be considered separately. Item 5.1 is the approval corrections of amendments of the regular meeting that was held on October 26, 2021, and the special meeting that was held on October 28, 2021. Item 5.2 is the adoption of Finance Resolution Number 21-021, the Schedule of Bills. Item 5.3 is approved pay estimate number 17 to Kraus Anderson for the MECC project, and this is the MECC project, that's the name of the MECC project, which is now the Iron Trail Motors Arena, but at this time, it was the MECC project, in the amount of Item 5.4 is approved pay estimate number 17 to Kraus Anderson for the UN's Field Redevelopment Project in the amount of $363,951.8. Item 5.5 is approve Dean Davich doing business as Happy Deans Eats to attend the Food Truck Festival on November 20, 2021. And item 5.6, approve the travel request for Allen Lewis to attend the FRI 2022 Program Planning Meeting and Site Visit, December 12 through the 15th, in 2021, in San Antonio, Texas, at no cost to the city. These are the consent agenda items that are before us. I would like to refer back to item 5.2, which is the Finance Resolution Number 21-021, the Schedule of Bills. I would like to pull out one, one item in the Schedule of Bills, and that is a payment to JVT Investments. It's a grant in the amount of $110,510.50. This is a payment on a grant application for a business owner in the committee, which happens to be our city counselor, Julianne Paulson. And so as part of approving of these bills, Julianne Paulson and the family, Counselor Paulson and her business would have to recuse themselves from this particular vote. So what I ask of the council is for a vote to approve the consent agenda items on Finance Resolution Number 21-021, the Schedule of Bills, and hold in abeyance for a separate vote the JVT investment grant in the amount of $110,510.50. Counselor Johnson?
I will make the motion pulling the specific item you mentioned.
Okay, so I'm looking for, well, there's a motion to pull this from the agenda. Is there a support? Support by Counsel Freely. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Looking for a motion to approve the remaining part of the Resolution 21-021.
So moved.
Moved by Counsel Johnson, supported by Counsel Freely. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Biondich.
Thank you.
Did you want to pull another one?
No, I don't want to pull another one.
Very good.
I'd just like to ask a question.
Please do.
Okay. On the, there is a KS State Bank for a total of $4,851.22. Could you tell me what that is for?
Sherry?
At this point in time, I cannot, but I do have the box downstairs. So after the meeting, if you'd like to come down there, I will show you the invoice.
Okay, thank you. And some of these, I just, I know a lot of them have what they are for afterwards, but it's helpful when I look at this, just to see what we have, but I will stop down after. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Biondich. So it has been moved and supported to approve Finance Resolution Number 21-021, and holding out of that abeyance, the vote is the one item of JVT Investments in the amount of So the rest of the consent agenda has been moved and supported for approval. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Now we'll act on the one agenda item in our Finance Resolution is a grant application that was approved and a payment made to JVT Investments in, it's a grant in the amount of $110,510.50 for part of the downtown revitalization and downtown movement. And so I'm looking for a vote and action on that. Counselor, anyone would like to make that motion to approve that part of the grant in that Finance Resolution number?
So moved.
Moved by Counsel Freely. Is there support?
All support, Mayor.
Support by Counsel Haribou. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, for clarification, this is the grant from the IRRB for the demolition of Building 316 Chestnut Street after the fire, so thank you.
Thank you. It's to clarify, that's money from the IRRB for the demo of the building at that location. So it has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Recuse.
One recusal. Any opposed? Motion carries. Six ayes and one recusal. Thank you. Okay, we'll move to item number six on the agenda, which appearances. And we have before us on our item 6.1, Chrissy Worris from the Iron Range Home Show, Home Boat and Travel Show. She's the coordinator to discuss the 2022 Iron Range Home Sport and Travel Show, and with her is Larry, I'm sorry, also representative of Home Boat and Travel Show. If you just state your name for the record once again, and welcome to a city council meeting.
Hi, my name is Chrissy Worris. I am speaking on behalf of the Iron Range Exhibitors. With me, I have Larry Lanska.
Larry Lanska, board member and treasurer for the home show.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, and thank you, city council members. I'm here today to talk about our up-and-coming home show, March of 2022. First, I'd like to tell you a little bit about the home show and who the Iron Range Exhibitors are. The home show has been going on for approximately 40 years. It is run, has been run in the old miners' building. We are really excited to bring it to the new building. I was able to get a tour of it from Tyler Lundine, and it is very gorgeous. The Iron Range Exhibitors are vendors in our show, so this is a vendor-run show, and the idea they had behind that was to keep costs low for the vendors coming in and also to make it accessible to the community members. As well as having vendors come in, we also include local nonprofits, such as the Local Food Shelf, DAV, D-A-V that is, and the Local Boy Scouts Troop. All are included in our home show to help promote their activity. We are a very large event in the city of Virginia that is very beneficial to our local business, and it just helps connect our businesses with the community. So now I would like to talk about why I'm here. So we have had, been going back and forth with pricing issues. We knew this was coming. Everybody knew this was coming. In June, in the middle of June, late June of this year, we had, we received the escalating price breakdown that would eventually, the idea is to eventually get us up to that full rate price that you guys want. Starting off with, for the four-day rental would be approximately, or it would be $7,050. Obviously, seeing that number and our past number being $2,600 to rent the facility, it was a big jump. And let me just reiterate that our vendors are bored. They don't make money on this show. So any additional cost to us, we have to carry out to our vendors and then also the So after getting that number, our president of the Iron Range Exhibitors got on the phone with Brian Silver on June 21st. They talked about the rent at the $7,050, and what they came up with is Brian explained to him that the pipe and drape, the sound, electricity, power, all that would be included. Those are additional prices that we used to have to pay outsourced to bring in. So that being said, that was perfectly fine with us. It would give us a chance to get back in the show, make concessions going forward on what we need to do in the next coming years. On October 19th, I met with Tyler Lundine and Jim Hunt. We went over again what we talked about, starting with the price and what was expected out of that price in the show, as well as talking about just the show details. It was our first meeting. They were very welcoming and very responsive to deal with. It wasn't until October 22nd that I received an email from Tyler stating that we were going to see additional fees on top of that $7,050. So they, on top of that, we were to be charged for pipe and drape and electricity. Okay. Going forward now, Tyler was kind enough to send over rules and regulations that everybody had agreed upon prior, or for the rental of the building. Part of those rules and regulations talk about the concessions and how the Iron Trail Motor Event Center, right, has final say over concessions and that they may run concessions over any event, and that nobody can come in selling the same items that the concession does. This rule and regulation has never been brought to us in the past, and it would alienate longtime vendors that have been a part of the show. So because the show has proven to be of value to the community, the Iron Range Exhibitors would like to request the following from the city council. We would like to request that there be no concessions at the arena. We would like to keep the original agreed-upon price for $7,050, including sound, power, or electricity, and pipe and drape. However, this year, the exhibitors are willing to outsource the pipe and drape since the event center does not have enough to support our show. So that is something that we will have to outsource this year anyhow. And then finally, in order to meet the rental price, the Iron Range Exhibitors will need to start charging an entry fee into the show. According to your rules and regulations, we need to get that approval in writing from the council. So I will open it up to you. If you guys have any questions for me or Larry, I will do my best to answer them.
Okay, thank you, Chrissy and Larry, for coming today. I'm looking for some clarification as well about some of the issues that were, you've been dealing with over a period of time. And so I'll reserve my comments until the rest of the council has an opportunity to speak, and we'll move over to first Counselor Paulson.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, both of you, for coming and helping to clarify this, because I've had a couple conversations with Doug Ellis as well. So the email that Doug sent me forwarded, and then now Tyler, I think, forwarded to the council, it was dated Thursday, March 25th of 2021. Was that the first contact that basically stated the de-escalating rental agreement rate? And then it says, for the whole facility at the, it was the MECC back then, you will be able to rent at a daily cost of $1,762.50. Is that what that $7,050 totals?
Yes.
Over the?
Four days.
For the, okay, over those days. Okay, so in writing, you received that documentation from the Lundine Group as far back as March 25th of 2021. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and then on June 21st, was that June 21st of 2021?
Correct.
As well. Okay, so there hadn't been a lot of conversation from the March until June?
Correct.
Okay. So I guess the only, I mean, it's in writing, you have a quote in writing that states, and it's over the next, it looks like till the year 2025. So I guess, I don't know if our city attorney has looked at this documentation, but I do believe that this is a quote that you were given and that the city needs to stick to what you were originally given. The fact that we don't have enough pipe and drape, I don't, I think that should be a given, that if you're going to pay it for yourselves, you're going to pay that, that we shouldn't be expecting you to pay it twice if you're already going to pay it once on your own. And then the question that I had, when you, when they, when you were having a conver- that I had, when you, when they, when you were having a conversation about concessions, was it food concessions, or was it alcohol? Could you expound on that a little bit?
Oh, in my original discussion with Jim and Tyler, I met with them on, I think it was October 19th. But we talked about going through all of our stuff, and they mentioned that they would wanna run concessions. And at that time, I had told them that that would be a problem with our vendors. In the past, that we had asked anybody coming in, or even if the city had concessions, that it not be the same as what our vendors sold. I mean, they seemed fine with that. I don't think they're the decision makers in it, unfortunately. But during that whole meeting, they also talked about being able to supplement some of the cost on their half, because we're paying a lower rent coming in to what a new person, I suppose, would have to come in and pay. They started throwing around some ideas, and that's when alcohol was brought up. So, they had asked if we would be willing to sell alcohol, or let them sell alcohol at the show. At that time, I told them that in the past, it has been brought up. Our board members were not very, well, they didn't consider it very long. It was a family show. So, we talked about different things, and I told them that I would approach it with the board.
And I would wholeheartedly agree with that portion of it. The concession part, I think I'd like to maybe hear from our city attorney on that part of it, but I feel like if they're renting the whole facility, it's not, it's not the naming rights that we're running into here. It's the duplication of vendors that would be in direct competition with vendors that you guys currently work with. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I had to ask. Thank you.
Thank you. And before we, let's see, lights on here. So, before we go to you, Brian, I have a couple of questions. I know there was an email that was disseminated, that was dated April the 25th, I don't see it in the packet here, where it was alluded to the fact that the price for the rental of the facility, and the discussion that one of your other board members had, Doug Ellis, who could be here today, he has another commitment, was also, it was also solidified and actually reiterated that the amount was gonna be $1,762.50. And of course, the conversation was that this was gonna be the entire rental, including electricity, and as you indicated today. With respect to the concessions, I know historically, when you were in the old Miners Memorial Building at that time, running the home show for all those years, the previous park and director, John Bachman, had the concession stands in the Miners open, and they were selling some concessions. And of course, you were allowed to have whatever concessions you needed. With respect to your home show, there's no restriction about that. So, there wasn't a competing issue at that time, and so I don't understand why there's a competing issue this time. Same holds true for the alcohol. I would not be supportive of, if you don't want alcohol, you're renting the billing, you shouldn't have to have alcohol in the billing. But, and always, this is my personal perspective. And so, when I look at that, this is, this is kind of a, it is an adjustment period for all of us. This is the first year that events are gonna be held in the Iron Range, the Iron Trail Motors Event Center. And so, when we looked at that, and we talked about it early on in the discussions, and I'm not just talking about the discussions in your right, I'm talking about early on, as we talked about people who have, and organizations who have rented the facility, the old Miners in the past, are now gonna be renting the new Iron Trail Motors Event Center, and that we were gonna make the accommodations to ensure that it was a smooth transition moving forward, and try to keep, you know, the opportunity for the first year to be able to accommodate you then. And then, of course, the few years to follow, there's an escalating clause, and that was all discussed about that. And we discussed that at committee home meeting, we discussed it at the council meeting, we discussed it in many other meetings about how we're gonna set these prices, and we did that. But from my perspective, I think that it's an adjustment period for the first year, and that there's a, there's a, an assumption based upon the emails, that the $1,762 is the whole package. And then, so that was proffered to you early on, and then, of course, when it says electricity in the, in the back part of it here, where I have it, some notes here. It says, "Electricity, I turn motors event center will ensure that all vendors request electricity to their booths, request that our team receive all requests 10 days prior to the event." There's nothing about pricing in there. And I know that later on, now, after your discussions, when it was agreed upon price was $1,762, and it comes up to $7,050. The pipe and drape that you had to get before, we didn't have enough for you before when you were at the Miners. And so, you rented that in the past, it was a significant cost. I don't know how much it was. Could you tell me approximately what that cost was for pipe and drape for your previous events?
About $3,700.
So, $3,700. Okay, thank you. I have a couple other questions and comments, you know, as far as the process moving forward. And so, we hope that we were able to come to some kind of resolution today about making sure that you have the opportunity and are able to hold the Homeboat and Travel Show. And of course, of course, we'd be looking for a motion, you're asking for us, for approval, and a motion for you to be able to charge admission in order to accommodate the increased costs associated with this event, you charged in the past, and then you were able to accommodate, so you didn't have to charge. And now, because of the costs, it's prohibit, it's prohibit, cost prohibitive based upon your current structure, you want to charge additional money. So, my question to you before we go to Counselor Johnson, is have you, have you figured out what that cost would be per person, so that we may be able to act upon it, either, you know, discuss it at our next committee home meeting, act upon it. If you don't have a figure now, I would ask that you provide that figure to us, so we can discuss it at our next committee home meeting, which is a week from today. And then, we could formally approve it, or discuss it further, and may take action in the following council meeting, which gives you enough time. Would that give you enough time as you speak and gather your vendors and get them slotted into the, to your event? Would that be, would that be reasonable?
Yes, I think that is reasonable. We have spoken on price in the past at our meetings, and what has been discussed so far, not approved by the board, but discussed, just to give you guys a heads up, is $5 ahead, children 12 and under free.
Thank you very much. Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to request that we have all of the written communication. We only have select couple of emails. In this room, we had a discussion, as the mayor alluded to, about how we were gonna charge and what we were gonna charge. And part of that conversation was that there was a rental fee and add-ons. That was from the first time we had that discussion, if my memory serves me right. So, this is, again, one of those things that we are, we are in a different building. It's different. I struggle anytime we've had this conversation, and we've compared what we used to do to what we are doing, to what we need to do, whether it's the ICE, whether it's, you know, this show, craft shows, wedding rentals, which we haven't had in years. And I'll just say right now, I'm not ready to make any decisions tonight until we get more information. And nothing in what I see says inclusive. On the same hand, it doesn't say exclusive. So, I think that's a mistake on my part, as we were looking at this ahead of time, for not questioning that earlier. I think it would be helpful, as we're discussing this, hopefully at the next committee of the whole meeting, we have what we've set in front of us as a council, the prices we set and how that works. Specifically, questions I have that may or may not be answered tonight, that I would like answered, is what is the duplication of the concession services?
The duplication would be hot dogs, Polish, popcorn, and...
Pop and water.
Pop and water. Yeah, those are just off the top of my head. I would need a concession menu to give you a full...
And I think that would be helpful to know, because I think that may be a point of discussion, to say that they're going to, I know we don't make mini donuts, and that's why I would go. The other thing that we need to consider, that if we are going to have a, specifically for this particular event, if we are going to make special accommodations, I would like to see the four or five-year plan specified as to how we're gonna make accommodations moving forward, so that we're not having this discussion next year, and the year after, and the year after, based on 10% increments. I think that if we're gonna be diligent about this, you need to know what to expect, and we need to know what to expect. So, that, because in our reality, if the city is going to be providing services, or we're gonna be renting the pipe and drape in the future because you don't want to, or we said we would provide it, that needs to be budgeted in, either at the facility or as the city general budget or something, because it's not just free. Just because we are paying for it, or we're providing it, we are still working really hard at accounting for all use of that building, including internal city use. So, I know one of the plans moving forward is, if the city council decides to hold another meeting over there, that internally, there will be tracking of the rental space. So, we're really trying, working hard at maintaining this building, so that if a Carty's interested in renting it, as opposed to the city using it, we can make decisions based on that. My final part is, is that I, because it's a private rental, and I would ask for clarification on this, why would the council need to approve any rental fee, or any charges that you, that your organization provides? I don't think that we have to approve hockey game, if they charge fees for hockey games, or if a craft show charges a fee. So, I'd like clarification on why the council would need to approve the Homeboat and Travel Show having a entry fee. So, so that's where I'm at right now. I'm not ready to make any decisions until I have more information to make a well-informed decision. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson. And just one clarification with respect to, who told you, what city employee or what contract employee advised you that council needs to approve any, any fee you charge for entry?
I was sent over the rules and regulations from Tyler Lundin.
So, we need to see all of that, too, as we discuss this. And so, we need to know exactly what, what is recommended by the Lundin Group, and what we approve moving forward. And I read through these agreements, I read through the packets, and I am confused as to why this fee is charged here, this fee isn't charged here. So, there's some confusion there. And I think, as Counselor Johnson, and others probably will, that we need to make sure that we have all our ducks in a row, make sure we understand what's going on, so we can bring back to you an answer to give you the opportunity to hold the Homeboat and Travel Show here in, at the new Iron Range, the new Iron Trail Motors Event Center, as, you know, for this year and for years to follow, because we don't want things to be cost prohibitive. And I know that in the years to follow, after you've had discussions with Tyler Lundin, and Jim Hunt, and Brian Silver, that you realize, and you recognize that next year, the year after, and the year after that, you'll have to make accommodations in order to operate your show. But it's this year that's the issue. And so, we need to look at what we can do this year. The future years, everything's laid out, and all where needs to be done. But we need to know, we need to look at those contracts. I haven't seen the contract that requires you to get council approval to charge a fee. I don't understand that. So, we have our, we have our work cut out for it to us as well. So, a couple other comments later on. We'll go to Counselor Biondich, and then back over to Counselor Paulson. Counselor Biondich?
Thank you. I, I'm confused also, because I remember when we started talking pricing, anybody that had rented the Miners for years, they were going to be stepped up in increments, that it wouldn't be just the jump. It was only for new venues that wanted to come there that they would start at the higher price. So, I know we had talked about stepping it up, and especially for the Homeboat and Travel Show. So, that kind of confused me. Yeah, there's, there's a lot of questions that need to be answered. And I can totally understand, knowing where you, I've been to the show every year, and the concessions, that really would depend on the alcohol. The selling of alcohol concerns me a little bit for something like that. It's a family event. But I appreciate you bringing this forward to us, so we have a chance to look at it and come back with some answers. Thank you.
So, one more question. This, this floating around information about charging $30 for booth space, is that an issue? Or is that just was a discussion item?
That would be if pipe and drape were available to us.
Okay, so, all right. So, and it's not. So, all right, thank you. Counselor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. So, what I would like to request is to receive a copy, excuse me, it's under kitchen slash food on the rules and regulations that you guys were sent, per item seven on the City of Virginia, Minnesota, Iron Trail Motors Event Center Rules and Regulation Document.
Have mine.
Excuse me?
You can have mine.
Do you have the, I mean, I'm looking for the full, whatever this council must have approved, an entire document. And I don't know, Pam, if we had approved an entire document titled City of Virginia, Minnesota, Iron Trail Motors Event Center Rules and
Counselor Paulson, I believe we do have that under the policy for...
Okay, so, we could, upon our discussion going forward, if we could receive that, so we can read that prior to having a discussion on the committee level, that would be wonderful. And then, just for clarification on this, when it says, because this isn't the first time we're gonna run into this. So, it says, "No outside non-alcoholic beverages nor alcoholic beverages may be sold at the Iron Trail Motors Event Center." So, Schwibys, they have, not alcohol, but do they have soda, fountain, right from a fountain?
No, they, they bring in a cooler, and he sells soda.
So, it's cans. Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. And the fabulous lemonade, can't forget that. But, so, if it's a Coca-Cola product, that shouldn't, Coca-Cola wouldn't have an issue with that. Is that correct?
Brian?
Another contract we need to read.
Mayor, and I just, I was just looking at that contract. And actually, there are some, the city has contracted for those non-alcoholic beverage vending services, and the contract is pretty specific, that it's exclusive to the vendor for any time that those products are being sold.
And is that in our concession stand? So, like, if they're in the ballroom and throughout the arenas, would that, and then they have vendors, obviously, at different stations, selling different products. So, would that preclude them or prohibit them? When I did read over that policy, I didn't read it that way, but I might, I just read it that it was concession-specific.
So, the, there's, paragraph seven of the agreement is titled Exclusive Agreement. It says, "The parties expressly acknowledge and agree that the vending, fountain, concession, advertising, marketing, and other rights related to the products," and those are the soft drinks, "will be granted to the vendor pursuant to this agreement will be exclusive. And customer will not allow any other person or entity to exercise any such rights on any of the properties during this agreement term. And customer agrees not to solicit, accept, view, or entertain any competitive offers during the term of the agreement." So, I, by the term of that contract, it exclusive means exclusive on the property.
On the property, okay. So, and I don't mean to vet this out here, but as long as we're here, we might as well discuss it. So, would that be something, if you agreed to use Coca-Cola products, that we could go to Coca-Cola and ask them, could this be a contract that we could enter into, so their vendors would make money off of the Coca-Cola product?
Brian?
Thank you, Mayor, if I may.
Thank you, Mayor, if I may. Parties to contracts are always allowed to make those sorts of agreements, but this is one of those scenarios where I think we want to stay well ahead of it so we didn't run afoul of our contractual obligations, which could lead to a lot of other issues.
Okay, so, I guess I would recommend, you know, having this further discussion at the committee level, and then if we could just get all the information on the rules and regulations as well as the contracts for the vendors that would be kind of in competition directly with what the home and boat show normally brings in to Virginia.
Yes, thank you. If I may, with the consent of the council, I would suggest maybe, you know, this is going to be a long discussion because we're going to discuss what kind of vendors they can have there, what kind of beverages can be served there. There's apparently a lot of restrictions that you are not aware of, that we are not going to be enforcing, that we've discussed that you probably don't even know that existed already. And so, I think we should have a meeting, a special meeting, just to discuss this issue so we can get everything on paper, get everything vetted out, and make sure that we're all on the same page to give you all the information that you need, what the requirements are, what the restrictions are, to give you a better handle on whether or not, you know, what you need to do in order to have the event or not to have the event at the Iron Trail Motors Event Center. So, we need to make sure that you have all that information because apparently, the information that is disseminated in these meetings were not made clear to you. And so, I think, Council Paulson, to your issue, I think we need to have a, I would like to see as if it's amenable to the elected body here, we should have a special meeting just to discuss that, and we should, once we get the information that's requested by Council Johnson, Council Paulson, and the rest of us, that we have all our ducks in a row, we have everything laid out, invite you back, talk to you about this, and have this information so we can take a look at, everything's on the table so we can make sure that we're all on the same page and that you know what's required of you and what's required of us as well. Council Bearaboo.
Mayor, I'm really concerned about this. It's just getting intertwined really crazy because there's other individuals in there. We got Iron Trail Motors themselves that can restrict, you have cars coming into these shows, we got Ford that was there last year, are they going to restrict on their separate contract that we have with them or as part of this? We got all kinds of convolution in this whole thing. I think we need to rewire this whole contract and do something different. We don't want to kick out a, organizations are going to provide, you know, $7, $8,000 in the future, more money to the city, plus kick out our local people that put their product out there across the quad cities. That's stupid on our part. I mean, absolutely stupid. We need to revet that whole contract. I don't know how we'll get out of it, no, but we got to do something because we may have other big events coming up here. We know we got the postal service coming up here. We know we're going to have eventually the League of Minnesota Cities, the greater Minnesota Cities, the outer ones, we know they want to come here. We got a whole bunch of events like that, and if we have it too restricted, we're not going to have anybody to foster that facility, and we're going to lose money on it. We're just going to be paying through the nose to pay our leases and stuff on it and have nobody here to help us with costs. You gotta act like a business, not like an entity that's going to be so restrictive that nobody's going to want to come here. That's my philosophy, being a businessperson. You gotta flow with what the market bears, and we're not doing that at this point, you know. So, we need to have a long discussion, you're right, Mayor, on this, and we probably need a special meeting and get all this information ahead of time so we can vet it before we have the meeting.
Thank you, Council Bearaboo. What I'd like to do is, you know, these other organizations that come in, the bookings that are coming in, they're in a circumstance where they're not bringing in alcohol, they're not bringing in vendors to their event that's going to serve alcohol or serve soda or provide concessions. This is a unique renter in the homeboat and travel show where this is part of their mantra. This is what they have, they've had these for years, they bring in these concession vendors. Most of these people who are in organizations that are booking this facility don't have that. We provide all that for them, and I think that was the goal and objective and the purpose of this contract under those circumstances. But in this case, with the homeboat and travel show, I think it's a little unique, so we have to be able to figure that out. So, I think what I'd like to do is maybe have a special meeting scheduled, maybe we can have Pam look at our schedules and give some dates that are amenable to the elected body, and then if we're all, can we get a quorum together? We can notify Larry and Chrissy, we can notify the both of you, and then you can bring some people in, and we can sit down and work it out. Would that be amenable to you? Anyone else on the council, any questions, comments, concerns at this point in time? And if not, I would like to have a motion to have Pam schedule a special meeting to discuss this subject, this subject only, with respect to the homeboat and travel show.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, moved by Council Paulson and supported by Council Freely. Further discussion, Council Freely.
Just really quickly, I fully agreed with the summarization of the process you were putting in place to vet this out, but the thing that disturbed me was when you said to determine whether or not they can hold that. And after 40 years, it's not that they're not going to, we are going to vet this out to make sure they do in some capacity. That's absolutely necessary for this facility, for this community, and for this organization.
Thank you, Council Freely, well said. Okay, thank you. Okay, anything else?
Mayor.
Yes, Council Bearaboo.
How fast can you get the information, Bearaboo? I see you sent some of the stuff to us already. Is that what we're going to need for vetting it out?
We'll have to pull, we'll put the full package together, one big package, not this information, we have everything, so we'll have it in one package to review issue at a time.
You're going to have it next week, I'm not going to be here because I've already got commitments for my hunting shack for deer season with people coming, so I'm not going to be there, and I want to be there.
Okay, well, let's ask.
Unless we do it Tuesday and have a held along meeting on Tuesday when it's committee of the whole, I don't care if we do that.
Let's ask, you know, Chrissy and Larry, I mean, so, how soon do you need to have this vetted out? I mean, what is, I know you have to get something, so what is the timeframe? Do you have a couple of weeks or not?
We can make a couple of weeks work. We ran into this snag because we weren't expecting to pay more, and we are meaning to approve our contract going out to our vendors. So, the sooner that we can get that cost out to them, the better. And just to give you, leave you guys with another thought, the Iron Range exhibitors knew that this building was coming. They were starting to prepare for it. Then we got hit with COVID. Our last two shows have been canceled, so we weren't able to step up those prices gradually like we talked about years ago.
All right, thank you. So, if we get something together within the next couple of weeks and as soon as we can so all of us can be participating in this, and let you know of a date that might be amenable to you, and would you be able to come during the day?
I would be, yes.
Larry?
Yes.
So, we could, you know, so we have some flexibility there, okay?
Mayor, I will be here on Tuesday of next week because we have the committee of the whole, but the rest of the week, I'm booked up. I hate to tell you this, but I booked it long before we talked about this issue, with the people that are coming to hunt at my hunting shack, and I want to be there for liability reasons.
Or, you know, we understand that, and.
But I don't want to miss this meeting either, and I don't want to be the lone one. If you have to have it some other day next week, then let me know and I'll see if I can make it.
Well, we'll try to find a schedule that's amenable for everybody because I think it's important for all of us to be here. And so, you have a little bit of a window of a couple of weeks potentially for that before you have to get back to, you know, start getting your vendors into place? So, if we do it within the next couple of weeks, that would be, would it give you some time?
I think so, yes.
Okay, so, we'll try to do that to go on your schedule, Council Bearaboo, and.
I'm not asking for a special concession from myself because the next week after that is Thanksgiving week, too, you got to remember, so that's going to be a short week, too. But then you get into December, which gets hairy, too.
Now, we have to have it sometime in the next couple of weeks, we'll figure that out and see if everybody's available. If they're not, they're not, and, but we want to make sure that we can accommodate you. We don't want to put you on a tight timeline because we're partially, you know, responsible for the confusion, and this is a work in progress, you know, we're gravitating to that, but we have to come to some kind of a resolution. So, if you can, take a look, Pam, at the schedule moving forward and throw out some dates that are available, and are you here during the week or you gone all during the week, too?
No, if you were to have it, like, say, I'll have to come in Tuesday, if you have it Wednesday, I'll stay, okay?
Okay.
The next day after, after the committee of the whole, if you want to have a separate meeting on this.
Right, and that's, I think, the goal and objective is.
Or if you wanted to have, I don't think you can get ready for the Monday prior to committee of the whole, I don't know whether you can for the Wednesday. But then I've got my whole family coming in, you know, for the rest of the hunting season that second week.
Okay, so, we'll figure it out and get you a date so we can all be amenable, so that's fine. It's a lot of discussion, but necessary for us to try to make sure that we're all here to be able to come to some kind of resolution and give you some opportunities here to hold this, this travel show has been gone for 40 years, so we need to try to figure it out, and we need the information in order to make a good decision, so, thanks for coming in. Is there any other questions, comments, or concerns that you have before we leave you this evening? And, I'm sorry. Yeah, if you would please provide our city clerk with your email, and she'll make sure that, you know, notifies you of our, the scheduled meeting, and if you can make it, that'd be great. So, we look forward to that, so. Thank you very much, thanks for coming in. So, there's a motion on the floor, the second, to schedule a special meeting to discuss the homeboat and travel show rates and costs associated with holding the homeboat and travel show at the new Iron Trail Motors Event Center. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion carries, thank you. Item number seven, unfinished business, the 2022 budget. Sherry, can you give us a little highlight? Are we getting close to coming to a final conclusion for our budget? Are you still working, tweaking it a little bit?
Yes, Mayor, and Council, I would like to have something for the next Tuesday's meeting, but it's looking, I'll have to wait and see what you guys got on the schedule.
Okay, thank you. And then item 7.2 is the sale of the hospital. Again, Brian, are we making snail's pace progress here?
Thank you, Mayor, and we may actually be picking up from a snail's pace.
Fantastic.
And so, I don't know if the council wants to take it up now or take it up later, but there were, there's two documents that I've asked be distributed that we need to address. One, the first document is an addendum to the purchase agreement which sets the, sets an extension on the date for close, that it would be no later than the end of the year, December 31st, 2021. And then the second document is a resolution that approves the appraisal that has been done for the hospital, and that's an important step because this is now needed as part of our submission to get that grant encumbrance or the bond encumbrance cleared off the property. And so, with these two final documents, we should be able to proceed pretty smoothly to a close, and speaking with Mr. Modich and Mr. Christiansen from the hospital, we anticipate that we'll be able to get it done well before the close of the year, but we've set a conservative date of December 31st.
Okay, and thank you. And the approved appraisal is?
It was an appraised amount that was what we would call a negligible amount. It actually ended up being a negative value based on what needed to be done at the property.
And I think that, and for Council Paulson's request, I think, if I may, Council Paulson, we're looking for that number.
I was actually looking, if I may, I was actually looking for the document before we vote to accept it. Can we have it?
The, I have provided a copy of the document to our administrator. The appraiser, the company that did the appraiser, the appraisal, has asked that anybody who's taking a look at that document sign a release just indicating that they're not going to be held responsible for anything that we do with the information. That's why it hasn't been distributed generally is because there's a release.
Was that a nondisclosure agreement?
Not, it's not a nondisclosure, it's essentially an indemnification.
Indemnifying council members that want to look at the document or have access to the document, from what?
Basically, well, it's a little bit different than that. Essentially, what the document that the, that's asked, that the appraiser is asked be signed is essentially that we're not going to go in and bring any claims against them about anything that's contained within the document or the assumptions that they made about the property.
Is that a normal procedure?
In large commercial appraisals, that is fairly standard.
Okay, before I would feel comfortable voting on this, though, I want to know what the document says in order to vote. Does that make sense? I mean, that's just my comfort level, I kind of do this with everything, I like to see it before I vote on it. And that's, I mean, if we need to go, when did, when did our city administrator receive the full appraisal?
I think I forwarded it at the end of last week or maybe early this week.
Okay, so, I guess with that being said, I'm happy to go in or sign whatever I need to sign so it can be disseminated to me so I will feel comfortable voting.
Hey, thank you. And then, under the two, both to set the extension for no later than December 31st, 2021, we can act on that tonight.
That's correct, Mayor.
Thank you. So, Council Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'm very confused, so I'm going to need some help, and if you can't provide the answer now, I'm fine with getting it later. That building belongs to the City of Virginia, and how can we do a transaction, a public transaction on a public building without having a value publicly known?
Brian?
Thank you, Mayor. And Council, the issue is not that the value assigned to the building becomes publicly known, the issue is more that in conducting commercial appraisals, the appraiser a lot of times has to make some assumptions, and what, basically, what the document that you sign is an indemnification, basically saying, okay, we're going to hold them harmless for any assumptions that they made, we're not going to go back and say, no, 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 we think that it's worth some other amount, that you assumed this wrong, and so that your entire appraisal is wrong, and you're liable to us for giving this false number.
Okay, so, that makes sense. So, and the city, what I'm trying to get at is seven of us as opposed to the city passing a resolution that allows the mayor and the city administrator to sign that for the city as a whole, is that something we can work on?
I believe it is, yes.
I would make a motion that we direct city staff to create that document so that we as a council and a city, so they don't have to worry about that.
Okay, so, the specific motion would be, Council Johnson?
To authorize city staff to create a resolution that allows the city as an entity to do the indemnity request that the company is requesting. So, as an organization, we don't have to take on the individual, the individual liability or the individual responsibility because in the future, a future council who didn't sign that would have, I would think, would be able to come back legally. If we did it individually, and then next, the next election cycle, someone gets on and goes, I never agreed to that and has a problem, I would want to make sure we're covered on both ends, so, does that make sense to you, Brian?
It does. To address that, typically, the concern ends when the sale is consummated.
Okay.
So, it's basically to cover that the appraisal does or doesn't come back and that we're not going to hold them accountable for assumptions that they made in coming to their appraised value.
Okay, but I would still like a city body agreement.
Good, so, you have that motion, Pam? It's been moved by Council Johnson, is there support?
No support for discussion.
Support by Council Paulson for further discussion. Support by Councilor Paulson for further discussion. Further discussion, Councilor Paulson.
Okay, so that that just means, just to reiterate what you're stating, that means that Brian, our city attorney, and Britt, our city administrator, will craft something that basically blanket covers the council and allows us to be able to see that document in full. Okay. My next question is, does that document ever become a public entered into public record?
Brian?
As a technical matter, it's with the city right now. It's been delivered to the city, and it doesn't qualify essentially as any type of protected data at this point.
So it will be, I want to make sure our taxpayers have the opportunity, it will be entered into public record. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, thank you. So that has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Councilor Bearbow?
Yeah, we're better off with an appraisal, like Brian said, because it gets us off big time with with deed itself from the state. So this is actually a good type of appraisal to have for monies that we may have had to reimburse deed. So you can make a a whole resolution like that with all of our signatures at the bottom, too. That's where I've seen them done before. So everybody signs off as a body to do that, and we all sign off on one document for the information that they're requesting.
Correct. Okay, thank you. So it has, so this is the motion for the dim for the one blanket. It's we we still have another couple of motions to do here or defer. So moved and supported by Councilor Johnson. You have the proper motion there, Pam? Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Hearing, Councilor Biondich?
Brian, several weeks ago, I had asked for the appraisal that was just on the helipad. Is that wrapped into this whole thing, or is that a separate appraisal?
It's one single appraisal.
Well, that includes the helipad.
Correct. And the reason for that is technically, while the bond financing was was for the development of the helipad, and incidentally, some some additional funds for elevator improvements, the entire property, the entire developed property was encumbered by the financing, by the language of the agreements.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Biondich. It has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We still need a motion to set to approve the extension of this sale, signature closing to December 31st, 2021.
Also move that, Mayor.
Councilor Bearbow moves to approve the extension for the sale and the closing of this no later than December 31st, 2021. Is there support? Is there support?
I'll support for discussion.
Okay, thank you. Support by Councilor Johnson. Is there any further discussion? Councilor Johnson?
What are we extending it from?
I don't know.
I I believe technically, I believe the the previous extension went through October 31st, I believe, or or some we're essentially, we're past the date. The purpose for this is to extend it because part of what we have to submit to deed is a valid purchase agreement. And we've got to have the date of the date range or closing date out beyond the date of our submission.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilor Bearbow?
I'll be happy to get this done. I've been working with this since way the heck, seven, eight, nine years now, so I'll be glad to get this done. So that's my comment on this. I was part of the original, we started this way the heck back. I'll be glad. And it's only the appraisal on the helipad and that elevator, it's not the whole hospital property, correct? Because that was done a long time ago.
That's incorrect.
That's incorrect.
This is an appraisal of the entire hospital facility.
Oh, okay, okay. But we paid off all of that hospital, I thought. So I mean, essentially, it's just the helipad and it's holding us up in the elevator, correct?
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, please.
You've got to clarify that for me because
Wait, Brian.
We paid off all the bonds on the hospital.
Correct, and we've actually paid off all the bonds that that relate to the helipad and the elevator as well. But there's a restriction placed on the sale of the property that we either have to hold it for 125% of its useful life, or we have to receive fair market value. This appraisal is intended to set that fair market value.
Thank you. So now it's been moved and supported to authorize the extension to December 31st, 2021. Is there any further discussion? Councilor Paulson?
Thank you. So I just have one question. I'm I'm fully in support of this, but I do have one question. If it goes beyond December 31st, 2021, does the city have any discretion or recourse to start charging rent?
Brian?
Yeah, essentially, if we go out past December 31st, then the agreement, this purchase agreement will, by its own terms, come to an end theoretically, and we may be back at square one. So it's I I think it's in in the city's best interest to to try and consummate this transaction.
And and I would agree with that, but there's no language in here if it doesn't happen. So we're we're just going to say it is going to happen by December 31st.
Fingers crossed.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, thank you. It has been moved and supported to extend the sale and closing of the hospital between the City of Virginia and the essential health to December 31st, 2021. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so we'll wait for approve the appraisal, we'll deal with that at the next committee of the whole meeting, and once we get the document moving forward. Thank you. And so we'll move to item 7.3, which is the rental code ordinance. I know we're continuing to work on that. We're getting closer and closer to coming to a a final draft of that, and I think our city administrator hopes to bring something forward, I believe, if I if I if I'm accurate to the next committee of the whole meeting. So anybody else, any questions, concerns, or comments about this rental code as we move forward? I know we've all submitted our our changes and redlines and things of that nature, so we hope to receive a final document for consideration. Seeing none, thank you very much. We'll move to item 8, which are discussion items. Item 8.1 is to appoint Pam Gennellini to the Housing and Redevelopment Authority Board for a five-year term beginning November 22nd, 2021.
So moved.
Councilor Johnson moves to approve. Is there support? Support by Councilor Barnzelli. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item 8.2, adopt a resolution for change order number eight for the UN's field redevelopment project for the east parking lot in the amount of $83,661.13, and this is a carryover from our committee of the whole meeting regarding the the cost of all corrections that have to be made to accomplish this. So looking for a motion to adopt this resolution to approve.
Also move, Mayor.
A move by Councilor Bearbow, is there support?
Support for discussion.
Support by Councilor Freely for discussion, further discussion, Councilor Freely.
So has it been concluded? It's completed?
Well, they've got another layer to put on next.
Okay, that's what I was going to say, because there's standing water still.
Yes, this is the first layer. I don't think they're going to be able to. I think this was next spring, they're going to put the final code on.
Okay, that's what I was concerned about when I saw that there was standing water. It was like, if this is done, that that's not what we agreed to. So if that's the case, then I can hold up on that.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, hopefully, you won't have to bring that up. Hopefully, it'll be done next spring. Okay, thank you.
Well, if you're Mayor.
Yes, Councilor Bearbow.
If they look at the roadways going in there, there's still curb showing before blacktop, they'll hit that parking lot at the same time.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item 8.3, do we need to take these separately, each resolution separate? Okay, thank you. Item 8.3 is adopt the following resolutions regarding special assessments. 8.3A, adopt a resolution for the special assessments for the delinquent public utilities.
So moved.
Moved by Councilor Johnson. Is there support? Support by Councilor Barnzelli. Is there any further discussion? Councilor Biondich?
For these rental properties, do we know?
Well, some are rentals and some aren't. There are any properties that are delinquent in their in their in their in their public utilities. Could be commercial, could be residential.
The only reason I ask is I've been approached by a resident that was living in a rental property where they have no heat. So I just feel I feel bad for the people who are renting, and it's the owners. And I didn't think we could shut the heat off during going into the winter months.
I think that I would advise that individual call the Department of Public Utilities. And we do have an issue with our code official. If they if they're renting property and they're not providing heat, they're responsible to ensure that that's that they provide that within the coordinates, whether they have a lease or not. Pam, do you have anything?
No, I don't. But other than the fact that these are just they come from the public utilities that we have to certify to the county, so they would have to contact the PUC to certify, or if you have a parcel number or something. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So do we have a motion on that one? Do we have a motion on item 8.3A? Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item 8.3B, adopt a resolution for the special assessments against properties for low-interest and conversion loans.
So moved.
Moved by Councilor Johnson. Is there support?
I'll support, Mayor.
Support by Councilor Bearbow. Is there any further discussion? Councilor Freely?
I'm just like, I'm a little troubled by this because this is a whole battering ram of assessments that all of a sudden have come to our attention. And I guess I'm my concern is like, what kinds of conversations have been had and are conversations had with regard to these things so that people can explain the circumstances that they're under by which put them in the position to be delinquent on that? Or is it just, it is what it is, and that's that, and we put the hammer down?
Well, I I do know, Councilor Freely, that, and maybe Councilor Bearbow can add on to this a little bit, and we'll go to Councilor Johnson as well. The the Department of Public Utilities contacts the people. They try to work any way they can to try to accommodate, give them an extension, you know, opportunities, a payment plan, and those kind of things. When that when all those options are are exhausted, this is a result of of shutting off the power, so to speak. Councilor Johnson? I'm sorry, maybe a clarification from Pam first, and then over to Councilor Johnson. Pam?
Thank you, Mayor. These are loans that the people have agreed to have assessed and make the payments for their conversions. They're not delinquent. They're just opting to have the loan assessed to their property to make the payments.
Thank you for that clarification, Pam. Councilor Johnson? You were going to say the same thing. Okay, so that has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item 8.3C, adopt a resolution for the special special assessments for the emergency blight remediation.
So moved.
Moved by Councilor Johnson. Is there support? Is there support?
I'll support, Mayor, for discussion.
Support by Councilor Bearbow for discussion, further discussion. Do you have some discussion, Councilor Bearbow?
Yeah, normally, the the contact for these blight things from our offices here in City Hall, and John can attest it as many times before they kick up the means that people aren't paying the blight charges that they've been charged, I believe, is what it is. They're just they're just not paying it.
We assess their taxes.
Yeah, we assess their taxes.
Right, thank you.
I'm wrong on that, Pam.
This is for any homes that may have had a fire that we needed to clean up in that process. So that's getting assessed. The next one is for the blight violations that haven't been paid.
Yeah, we'll get to that one the next. So under item 8.3C, has it been moved and supported? Is there any further discussion on that one? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now, item 8.3D, adopt a resolution for special assessments for blight violations. Councilor Bearbow? Okay, moved by Councilor Paulson. Is there support? Support by Councilor Biondich. Further discussion?
I was just on the wrong page before.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion, Councilor Freely?
Are we still conducting blight violations based on neighbor complaints?
Yes.
And I'm troubled by that, I guess, to be honest with you. But because there, I walk all over town, and the reality is, this town is littered with blight. And even my property is considered blight in the eyes of some, you know, that's what's troubling. And so it just seems like because you have a neighbor that's finding your property unattractive, file a complaint, and pressure on people, many people who are elder, have the money, don't have the time, don't have the health, whatever the case may be. And I'm sure there are legitimate concerns for blight violations in town, but I'm just troubled by this notion that to get action on blight in this town, it's initiated by people complaining about others, when in fact, I would expect others to lend a hand to their neighbor as opposed to complaining about their neighbor. But that's just me saying that, and I know that we can't all lend a hand to that degree, and I just wanted to state that. I'm concerned about how much blight there is in this town that's neglected entirely because there aren't neighbors next to them that are concerned about that. So in any event, I just had to say that. Thank you.
And thank you. And I do know that our code officials get these complaints on a regular basis. They go out and inspect, they do the proper, follow the procedure for the property preservation and maintenance code, they take pictures, they contact the people, they work with them to try to get them to clean it up the best they can. If not, they even provide opportunities or make some suggestions of what they can do to make sure it cleans up. And those who do not comply, and the ones that are the most extreme violators, I think, go under these special assessments on their taxes for blight. I think the code officials and we, I think we've charged them, we've actually, you know, give them the option to make those inspections. But at the same time, I think we've also asked them to be as as amenable as possible to try to help them in any way, shape, or form, clean up the blight. And many of these blight violations that are being assessed are on blight on properties that aren't even are abandoned and nobody even has them anymore. And so they can't get a hold of the owner or whatever, so they we're assessing the taxes based upon that. So there's a variety of other reasons as a result. But I think your point is well taken, Councilor Freely. You wouldn't want to be, you know, just arbitrarily doing this without making some conceivable, some effort to help people comply. Item 8.3, we have to motion on that. Is there further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item 8.3E, adopt a resolution for special assessments for violation of vacant building registration. And this is on our property maintenance code. Apparently, this applies to mostly rental properties, I think, and they don't have that they have to follow in that guideline in order to any vacant building. So and do we have, do we know how many of those we have? Six of them, so that haven't paid or haven't, they're in violation. And like, once again, we try to work for them, I think, to ensure that that they comply. Councilor Johnson?
So moved.
Moved by Councilor Johnson. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Councilor Biondich. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Item 8.3F. Adopt a resolution for special assessments for clear water discharge violations. Is this respect, is this in relation to some pumps? Thank you. One was paid, so took care of that. Okay, looking for a motion.
All moved.
Moved by Counselor Johnson. Supported by? Counselor Barnzeli. Is there any further discussion, Counselor Johnson?
I do know that one of the ones we had to vote on last year actually installed a some pump and got taken care of this year. So it does work.
Okay, thank you. Has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Item 8.5. Adopt a resolution to designate the precinct and polling places for 2022. Pam?
Thank you, Mayor. This is an annual designation required by St. Louis County. We have to submit that before the end of the year.
And the polling places for 2022 are where?
Will now be at the Iron Trail Motors Event Center.
Thank you.
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Freely. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Counselor Paulson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Item 8.6. Planning and zoning meeting that was held on November 1st, 2021. Item 8.6A was recommended by the planning and zoning to approve the variance request for Bob and Nancy Youngman located at 605 South Sixth Avenue West for an 18-foot variance from the required 20-foot front yard setback in order to place a deck and access stair structure two feet from the east property line at 605 South Sixth Avenue West.
All moved.
Moved by Counselor Johnson and supported by Counselor Biondich. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, item 9. Commitment Report. Our city administrator is not here today. She has another commitment. So we'll go to item 9.1, Committee of the Home Meeting. I'm sorry, 8.7, did I miss one? I don't have, I don't have it on my mind. Do I have an old one? 8.6 and then no 8.7. So, okay, I'm sorry, I don't have it here. So we'll move to the official document. Thank you. Item 8.7, thank you, is to approve the horse-drawn tractor and trailer Christmas caroling per the attached route in the city of Virginia for Hope Ridge Acres. And you have that in your packet. So this is part of the Christmas caroling. Is this part of our festival trees? Or is it something different?
This is something different. They did it last year.
Just last year. Yeah, it was really kind of cool. Okay, thank you. Looking for council action. Moved by Counselor Paulson. Is there support? Support by Counselor Biondich. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Freely?
Just a recommendation that they're trailed along by a little trailer with a four-wheeler that picks up the debris. Hope that's part of the deal.
Yeah, I think that was the same concern that was held last year when they did it. And they, they said they do have, what'd they say, a person under the age of 18. That 's part of family, I guess. So thank you. Moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Now we'll move to item 9. Committee Reports. The Committee of the Home Meeting that was held on November 2nd, 2021. Item 9.1. Adopt a resolution approving the quote from Waschke to purchase the 2022 Sierra pickup truck with a plow for use by the sewer crew at a cost of $43,783.13. And this comes out of our sewer fund. Is that correct, Sherri?
Yes, in the year 222.
And for 2022, yes, thank you. And this is, came from our Committee Home Meeting, Counselor Johnson.
All moved.
Moved by Counselor Johnson. Is there support? Support by Counselor Biondich. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Item 9.1B. Approve the quote from Quality Flow for the replacement of a KSB hammer mix mixer at the wastewater treatment plant at a cost of $13,805. And this comes from our Committee Home Meeting with Mr. Mo from People Services making this request.
All moved.
Moved by Counselor Johnson. Is there support? Support by Counselor Freely. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Item 9.1C. There was a motion to table the approval of the IT agreement with Rogers Online and request that the original Pantheon contract be reviewed and information provided when Rogers Online began to work with Pantheon. Do we have that information, Pam?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, we have the information. It will be discussed at the upcoming Committee of the Home Meeting.
Okay, thank you. So we'll move on to item 9.1D. Unless a counselor has any other questions with respect to this. Okay, item 9.1D. Add an amendment to the agreement with Independent School District Number 2909, the provision with respect to control with the city versus the school district. And this was a conversation that was had at the Committee Home Meeting. And I would ask our city attorney, do we have that information? And those corrections made with this agreement?
We do, Your Honor, or Mayor. We did insert some additional language that clarified those, those issues.
And so are we looking for a motion to approve this agreement with that amendment?
I believe we are, Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
I will move with acceptance of the agreement as presented in our packet.
Moved by Counselor Johnson. Is there support?
I'll support.
Support by Counselor Paulson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Item 9.1E. Approve the agreement for the use of the city facilities with Rock Ridge Public Schools 2909 for the use of the Iron Trail Motors Event Center for the 2021-2022 school year with the recommended changes for further review. Didn't we just vote on that?
Yes, we did.
That was headed. Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. We'll move to item 9.1F. Approve the use of the city-owned parking lot on Silver Lake on Sixth Avenue and Chestnut Street, First Street North, in order to allow Revive Virginia to conduct a fundraiser for the fireworks in conjunction with the Festival of Trees and allow the entrances to be blocked and provide signage at the end of Chestnut Street for closure.
All moved.
Moved by Counselor Johnson. Is there support? Support by Counselor Barnzeli. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Item 9.1G. Adopt a resolution to hire Lori Perez as a county clerk one, as recommended by staff.
All moved.
Moved by Counselor Johnson. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Counselor Bearbrew. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Item 9.1H. Adopt a resolution to hire Matthew Warren as a new patrol officer for the police department.
All moved.
Moved by Counselor Freely. Is there support? Support by Counselor Biondich. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Item 9.1I. It was a motion moved to, from the, from the Committee of the Home Meeting to direct staff to contact the MPCA regarding the loon display at the Minnesota State Fair and return with a recommendation from the council as we discussed for the, for the, for the public at large here. We discussed a request from the MPCA. They would like our loon to be displayed at the, at the state fair. And so we had some discussion as to the purpose of why the loon is going down there and how, what's the loon going to represent, and whether or not that we can feasibly do that with the fragility of that structure. And if it was amenable for the council to do that, we're looking for some additional information. And did that come back yet? Okay, we're still waiting for that to come back. Hopefully, we'll have some information by the next Committee of the Home Meeting. Thank you. That concludes the committee reports. We'll move to item 10, which are commission liaison reports. Does any counselor have a commission or liaison report they'd like to give this evening? Seeing none. We'll go department head reports. John Sullivan, do you have, John, do you have any, anything in the area of planning and development and, and tax availability for new business? John?
Thank you, Mayor. The Planning Commission met on November 1st. And we went through a number of different projects that we have. The variance was, was one of them for 605 South Sixth Avenue West. We also went through the Remnant School Property Study, and we started rolling up our sleeves and working on that planning effort. We also discussed the Highway 53 concept planning. And there was a lot of lively discussion, and a lot of the planning commissioners came very well prepared and were ready to discuss it. And the general feeling from the Planning Commission was that if they were pushed back against a wall right now, they overwhelmingly said they would begrudgingly approve three roundabouts in those different areas. However, they actually did say, and this, you have to hear this out, it might sound a little different, but what Planning Commission really felt that Minnesota Department, they weren't trying to be non-respectful, but they felt that maybe the Minnesota Department of Transportation should allow the school, the Rock Ridge School to open so we can see what those traffic changes might be and what might be needed, and then design it and fund it. They just felt it was a little bit premature. The, the traffic study said that it was going to generate 3,500 more daily trips to the site. And they understand the need to fix these. They just thought, you know, how, how do we know until we actually see students and people using it? And they weren't trying to be funny or cute. They were, they were very serious about that. So that was their point. The other thing that they were concerned about was, you know, we, we pick the, the roundabout concept, well, what's the cost sharing? What is that agreement? We, we don't have that in front of us. We, we don't know what that is. And, and I think their, their question about the timing tied into that as well. But again, if their backs were against the wall and they had to pick right now, they would, they would go with the three roundabouts. One of our Planning Commission members wanted a real serious look at, given where Borger Road is and what they're talking about there. If Mindot wants to close Midway Drive and have something go around, maybe that should just be shut down and there should be a connection to the south, to Progress Parkway. But that was just one feeling that maybe that would save money and save, you know, having three of them and would funnel everything towards Progress Parkway, which is going to be the main entrance for the school regardless. The other thing the Planning Commission, and I, I will defer, the other thing the Planning Commission wasn't sure about and would like more information on is the school talks about maybe having control of the access in and out with, with a drive arm and stuff like that. And they said, well, who's going to get in? You know, how is that going to impact Borger Road and Progress Parkway and all the others? So they, they weren't exactly sure how that was going to work. And they, they wanted to know how that's going to work in context with the, the rest of the traffic. So lively discussion. We have a lot of really good members on there that spent time and really looked at the concepts. They're a fun group, and we're, we're making a lot of progress. I have more comments from some of the Planning Commission members regarding the rental ordinance. So it's not like there's nothing being done on that. I'm putting that together. They're, they're taking it pretty serious. So I have more information I need to go through on that. And we're going to begin in earnest. My last thing I need to talk about is the downtown redevelopment area was put together by an ordinance. City Council passed a resolution and it identified an area. And if you're familiar with that document, and it's, it's in purple, and it shows the downtown. And we've really done a nice job of addressing and fixing a lot of those properties in that area. But we've kind of, kind of, we're bouncing on the edges now. And there's people that, that are just outside that have approached the, the EDA. They've called me, they've, they've called staff, and they would like to improve their buildings. So to address that, what we're doing through the Economic Development Authorities, we're having the same process we did to set up the district is to expand it. Now, how we do that is we have Vince Meyer from the AEOA go out and do the same thing he did to establish the first district. He goes out and he does a visual inspection. He adds up all the parcels. We're going to go an extra block north and an extra block south. Pretty clear cut. And he's going to look at all that. He's going to start November 15th. So we sent out a letter and a map to everybody in that area. We, we did it the first week in November and said, we're looking at doing this again. And if you have any questions, call John Sullivan. What I've already received a number of calls from property owners that said, hey, can I fix my building? Am I eligible? You know, all those things. So soon, Mr. Meyer will be certifying that, submitting a report to us. And in turn, I will write that up for you, the council, to approve a resolution. We are not doing a tax abatement district this time. We are just, we don't need to do that. We already did for the core. We're going to expand it a block each way, and we don't need to use tax abatement for that. So it should be pretty slick. I'm really looking forward to that. That's going to give me, as your economic development guy, more tools to help other people. And I think I already know of a few projects that we're probably going to add to the list in 2022. So, thank you.
Oh, thank you, John. Any questions for, for John Sullivan? First, Counselor Paulson, and then we'll go to Counselor Bearbrew.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, John, for that great report. That's really exciting. I have just one question then. When Vince Meyer does this, is that, and I'm really happy that that's going to take place, but is SHPO going to be a requirement? And is there a historic element within that block north and south? That extension, extra block north and south?
That's a great question. I do not know the answer to that. I will find out.
And if we are, if you're setting it up a little differently than the, it'll be different than the downtown renovation program itself? Or this extension?
It'll just be like
It'll be the same?
Program we have right now. The only difference is, I didn't mean to interrupt, but the only difference is we're not going to do a tax abatement on the, on the expansion. We're not doing that.
So meaning like a loan?
When the original redevelopment district was set up to fund it, they did a tax abatement on all the parcels in the original core.
Got it.
And now that's kind of run its course. We've taken that money. We've, we've
Utilized it.
Yeah, and, and now we're going to expand the district. And we have to do a finding of blight, and Vince does that. But we're not going to raise money through a tax abatement on this one. We've, we've got grants, we've got IRR, we're, we're self-sufficient to run.
Yeah, I'm really excited. I'm very encouraged about all that going on. I just would see if there's any way, because I think the original, was the original funding that the city obtained. And I don't know if it was a deed funded, but it was tied to some SHPO regulation. So my question would be, once that, those dollars were spent down out of the fund, does that SHPO requirement have to take place? And it would be really nice if we could get beyond that for that, that extra addition. That would be wonderful.
That's a great question.
Thanks.
And I will find out.
Okay, thanks, John. And good job. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, yes, thank you, Counselor Paulson. Counselor Bearbrew, question for Mr. Sullivan?
John, mine was similar to Counselor Paulson's. I don't believe there is a Minnesota SHPO thing, but some of those buildings are federally historically designated. I know the Masonic Temple. Temple was if you go way back, so there's some federal stuff in it, because we had a big argument about that a long time ago, before Julie's end of time, Counselor Paulson, you better look at that also, and see what you can find, because we had a big, big argument, and I don't know if any of these counselors are here, except maybe, current Counselor Barnzelli, it was before their time, so there are some federally designated ones, but not the state.
Okay, yeah, thank you, Counselor Bearbu, okay, thank you, John, very comprehensive, some exciting things coming, that's so good, anybody else have any other questions for Mr. Sullivan? Okay, we'll move to other department heads, Sheri, anything you want to disseminate to the council with respect to finance or budget or personnel?
We've been busy, though, as you can see by the resolutions, for hiring, and we've had some personnel leave and resign or retire, but just, just really busy working on the budget, and I did send out the financials, so if anybody has a question on that, I'm encouraged by, we're, we're pretty much on, so.
Hey, thank you, I, I think I'm going to, we'll ask in the future for us to have a personnel committee meeting to discuss, you know, some of the vacancies that we seem to be constantly trying to fill, particularly in the area of the police department, so I'm looking for some information in that regard, and I'll be asking for a personnel committee just to quickly discuss that, thank you. Okay, Pam, you have anything?
No, I don't.
Okay, and so, okay, we'll go to item 12, council reports, does any counselor have a report they'd like to give, Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor, I've got two things I would like to bring up tonight, one of them is that the Musabe Range Community College campuses were awarded the Hunger Free Campus Award through LEAD MN, and I'll just give a little synopsis of what that is from LEAD MN, Hunger Free Campus is initiative led by LEAD MN to address food insecurity on community and technical colleges, the 2020, excuse me, Real College National Report shows that 45% of college students in the United States are food insecure, the statistic is consistent with the recent Minnesota data that shows 73, 37, excuse me, 37% of students have food insecurity, so basically what this means is that the college has worked very hard in partnership to provide a food pantry on both campuses in Virginia and Evlith, we have staff that are designated to help folks fill out their SNAP applications to get public services, we have emergency funds for folks that need extra help, we have a task force, and we also host hunger awareness events throughout the year, and this is done through generous support from grants from US Steel and Essentia Health, support from Lutheran Social Service, not to mention the staff on campus that give their time, but we also partner with the Quad Cities Food Shelf, and that's important in this room because every year this council votes to help pay for some utilities and support the Quad City Food Shelf, so through the support of this council, Evlith, Gilbert, and Mountain Iron, our students have food on a regular basis, so I really appreciate that support from this council and from the community at large. My other part is to make sure that folks know that November is National Adoption Month, and this year's national theme is Conversations Matter, so today I would like to have a short conversation about the latest statistics from the US Department of Human Services and the Administration for Children and Families, as of January, or, excuse me, as of September 30th, 2019, which are the most recent statistics, there were 423,997 children in the foster care, that does not include folks that are living with family and friends unofficially. Of those, 122,216 children were waiting to be adopted, of that, 24,443, or one in five were teens, nationally, of the children 15 to 18 years old, only 5% of those children end up getting adopted, most of the children in their teen years, years end up being unable to claim a family by the time they're 18. Minnesota has statistics that are a little bit more up to date, there are 832 children that are currently in adoptive relative or foster parents that plan to adopt them, also there are another 641 children that are in need of an adoptive family, of the 641 children in needs, 43% of them are aged 12 to 18, in other words, 276 teens in Minnesota have no one to call a family, and are likely to age out of the system. The need for foster care providers is great in St. Louis County, foster care is designed to provide short-term support for families to work towards permanent, permanency and reunification, foster care providers and foster care stays can range from a few days of emergency placement to the rare instance of a few years, the goal is permanency, most children, and I would stress, most children are reunified with parents or primary caregivers, adoption becomes the final solution when all the other avenues of family, even extended family, do not work out. St. Louis County Public Health and Human Services is seeking individuals and families to provide support to children, being a foster parent is hard work, as is being any parent, but being a child without a family is unacceptable, St. Louis County is looking for families and individuals willing to be able to provide care to children, foster parents can be licensed for any age, foster parents can be available for short-term and long-term placement, foster parents can be willing to adopt or be on, on-call emergency for weekends and nights, if you think you might be interested, please give St. Louis County a call and ask for the Foster Care Division, someone can have the conversation with you about how you might be able to help. There is also available, MINDOT.org is the state organization that has, has some great answers for adoption and foster care. About four years ago, I made the call, I had the conversation with a county licenser, I went through the process, and I can say that I have, that, I can say with the love of two adopted children and over a dozen foster children, that the conversation really does matter, so please, if you're thinking about having the conversation, you can get ahold of me, contact St. Louis County or Minnesota Adopt, because the conversation does matter, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson, okay, anybody else have something they'd like to bring up before we move, Counselor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor, I just wanted to give a quick shout out to the fantastic leadership within the Virginia Fire Department, we, our entire council received the email that they received a one-time appropriation amount, in, in the amount of $327,023, and this funding will allow our Arrowhead USR team to size from 13 to 30 members, it'll help send members to trench and structural collapse technician classes, purchase personal protective equipment, helmets, boots, turnout gear, hearing protection, work gloves, and inclement weather gear bags, and there was some collabora, collaboration relationships that were established with the Duluth Fire and the 148th Air National Guard, and obviously some fantastic leadership within the fire department, so I just wanted to give them a shout out, I'm not sure who wrote the grant within the department, but it's a fantastic accomplishment, and I just want to give them a shout out, thank you.
Yes, thank you very much, Counselor Paulson, I'm going to check that off my list right now, very good, thank you very much, I appreciate it, thank you, okay, and I, Counselor Bearbu.
Just a quick reminder, this is for Pam, Pam, can you put on the next committee of the whole, or on the next council agenda that we need to make a decision to, for our representative to ram's by the 10th of December, I think you've gotten some emails on that already.
Yes, I do, and it's in the committee, the whole packet for discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Bearbu, okay, I just have one I'd like to bring up before we adjourn for the evening, and Brett has asked me to bring this up, and it's regarding the Festival of Trees, the Festival of Trees is being held November 17th through the 21st, a lot of exciting events going on from Revive Virginia and partnerships from all over to help us out with that regard, there are so many, I could, there's a laundry list of those who have participated and are moving forward with helping out with the Festival of Trees, so many different events, so Wednesday, November 17th kicks it off, the Laurentian Chamber of Commerce is going to have Business After Hours from 5:00 to 8:00 PM at the Iron Range, the Iron Trail Motors Event Center, then Thursday is Family Night, hosted by Essentia Health Foundation, there'll be a silent auction opens up from 4:00 to 7:00, all the beautiful trees and all the other things that you want to vote on, so bring your checkbook and cash and your pen that don't run out of ink and sign up for a lot of those things, and from 4:00 to 7:00 PM, there'll be some entertainment going on at the All Clock Park Bandstand, there's going to be a festive food, a festive food of Domino's Pizza dessert, hot chocolate, and jingle bells up there, family photographs will be there, sign up for your time slot by visiting or calling the Virginia Community Foundation, Monday through Friday, 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM, a payment, you can pay for those ahead of time if you like, I think you want to talk to Maya Biondich, who is the administrative assistant there, and she'll fix you right up, and 6:00 PM that night, which is Thursday, November, is the tree lighting, the jingle jaunt and the luminaries and entertainment, so that's going to be exciting, and then Friday is the outdoor art storytime, hosted by the Friends of the Library, very cool for bringing your kids and all ages to go there, Designer Hat and Bag Bingo is going to be 5:30 PM also at the Iron Trail Motors Event Center, and there's tickets available for that, Saturday's the Winter Carnival, day one, there's a food truck festival, and, and there's silent auction bidding continues, and the horse-drawn carriage rides through downtown, and then Saturday we have Web Space Telescope Exploring Visible Light, that's hosted by, again, the Virginia Library, thank you to our library staff for, for, for doing that, some exciting things at the library, so please do not miss out on that, then there's the Blitzen Bar Crawl and the Ugly Sweater Contest, good luck, that's at 4:00 PM, 4:00 PM, and then they got the Holiday Twilight Parade, hosted by Revive Virginia at 5:15, that's on Saturday night, you know, there'll be a lot of stuff going on there, Santa Claus will be there, and Mrs. Claus is, my understanding is going to be there as well, and maybe there might be an elf involved, so then there's some festive fireworks going on, and then Sunday, November 21st is the Winter Carnival, day two, noon to one is, you have skating and, and with Frosty the Snowman and friends, and ice bumper cars, and breakfast with Santa is from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and then the silent auction for all the beautiful trees and other silent auction items will be finished by 2:00 PM, so a lot of things going on from November 17th through the 21st, if you have any questions or comments, you can go to the website, festivaloftrees.com, that's virginiefestivaloftrees.com, or you can find them on Facebook, which is at FOT Virginia MN, or you can call the Virginia Foundation, and the number is what? 749-8239, thank you, Maya, okay, so that's it in a nutshell, so anybody, if you don't miss out on this great event, there's a lot of hard work going on, a great community scene going on, so please enjoy November 7th through the 21st, and bring our friends and family, so, thank you, anybody else have anything they'd like to add before we adjourn? Brian, anything from the legal department?
Nothing from legal, Mayor.
Thank you very much, okay, we will adjourn to our next council meeting, which is going to be Tuesday, November 23rd, 2021, 5:30 PM, right here in the council chambers, thank you, everybody, have a great evening, be safe, we stand adjourned.